Meeting for Tuesday, December 6th. I'd like to call this meeting to order if we could all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doing roll call, all council members are present minus Councilman Lundin, who did give us prior notification of his absence. Any public comment at this time? I do want to remind anybody if they want to say something that has to do pertaining to the budget. Our finance director, Mr. Becker, will have a section in his his presentation that he'll ask questions and you can come up then. So if it has to do with the budget, let's wait until then. Anything else, feel free to step up. Just state your name and address clearly for the record, sir. It's on. It's on. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Al Garber. I live at 1223 Blossom Boulevard. And I wanted to thank you, Mayor, for your service to the city of Iscanyi. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment at this time? Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
We do have an amendment to the agenda.
You're right, Ms. Wood. I'm sorry. We're going to add K5 and archery range discussion, which will then move the finance numbers to K6, 7, 8, 9 instead. So do I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the addendum?
Motion to adopt.
Oh, I also have the winner of the four-pack of illuminated Iscanyi tickets in my hand. So I will also announce that. So do I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of those two items?
Motion to adopt the agenda with the addendums added in.
Second. Motion to adopt the agenda with the addendums by Councilman Burgley and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 4-0. Approving City Council minutes for November 15th, a regular meeting of City Council. November 15th as well, a committee of a whole meeting and November 15th, a campus board meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Collison and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 4-0. Announcements, committee of a whole will be Tuesday, December 20th at 5:00 p.m. City council meeting will be Tuesday, December 20th at 7:00 p.m. And a planning commission meeting will be Tuesday, December 20th, immediately following that council meeting. Any council committee reports? None at this time. We'll move on to business items. K1 is an interview, the applicant, Mr. Alexander Collins, for a vacant planning commission seat. Mr. Collins, I believe I saw you. If you would step up to the podium, sir. You've been pre-mailed nine questions that I have in front of me. I'll just ask the questions and you answer as we go, sir.
Sure.
Mr. Collins, what is the planning commission's role?
So the planning commission has two central roles.
There we go.
One is it acts as a formal adversary body to the city council. Second, it reviews the comprehensive plan of the city and ensure that it is implemented on a case-by-case basis.
Number two, Mr. Collins, what is the role of the comprehensive plan in the planning commission's decision-making?
The comprehensive plan, called the master plan, is a document that helps a city establish the overall development with recommended actions relevant to the current and the future need of the city.
And number three, do you feel the current comprehensive plan sorry, do you feel the current comprehensive plan applicable? Does it need to be changed? If so, how?
I think it's applicable, the 2007 and the updated 2020 comprehensive plan. I believe it's applicable because it is not static. It is a blueprint that can be changed or worked on based on the plan that I read. So it is not intended to be an exact blueprint of the city's future, but rather a tool to direct, coordinate, and evaluate the city's growth to ensure continual and order the development pattern. So in that case, I'd agree that it should not be changed because it's up to 2030. So we can always make those changes as we go.
And number four, what is the purpose of zoning code? Do you feel there are changes that need to be made there?
A zoning code divides a city in districts, residential, business, commercial, downtown, et cetera. I think it's a legal tour that is used to determine what can be built and where it can be built. Our current zoning code, as to whether we need to relocate it, I'm not sure, but I think it's working for us for now.
Number five, if you were asked to make a decision on a matter before you that does not meet city requirements, yet you are in favor of it, will you be able to uphold the city's standards?
Absolutely.
Number six, what is your knowledge of conditional interim use permits, zoning variances, and plaits?
So a conditional use permit cup is a city is a document that a city issue to allow an individual to temporarily use a property that meets a general and specific ordinance standards. And then for the zoning is a ad of or process of petition of city dividing the city into different areas, as I said, the set of ordinance by which such zones are established and regulated. And then the variance is basically when a property owner wants to use a property but needs to do that without following the established code. And then a plot is a map of a land which comprises several plots. It shows the map of an area comprises several plots.
Number seven, do you have planning or planning commission experience?
Absolutely. This place looks very familiar.
Number eight, did you volunteer within the Iscanyi community?
I've done other work basically, but I wouldn't say yes. I think other than here and things that I do, I wouldn't say, I'm not, I wouldn't say yes. Because the only role I play is with the commission here.
And I know this is the most important question, I think, of this council is can you attend meetings, sometimes lasting till 10:00 p.m. or later, once a month?
Yes, I have clear my schedule. As I stated in my email, I was both in law school and pastor in a church and leading a $1.8 million project. All of that now, the project is almost over. We are 90% sure of closing on the property. And then law school, pretty got that under my belt now, so I should be okay.
Any questions by the council?
I like him a lot. I like you. I liked you when you were on the board before.
I'll be, I'll be the one that's going to be frank, Mr. Collins, all right?
Okay.
Since they're going to beat her on the bush.
Sure.
You're great at what you did here in the city. You were phenomenal. But the problem was, is you couldn't show up. And that's where a lot of these guys had issues with you. So if you can tell these guys that you're going to be here when you're supposed to be here, I don't see any issues with the oncoming regime.
Well, I think I stated that in my letter, Mayor. I, last year I did a lot of travel, you know, that I was out of the country. I do a lot of travel. I pastor a church, a growing church. I do other things. I'm in school, as I stated. And so when I took on the $1.8 million building project, on through at the meetings, I got overwhelmed and did not call as I should have done. And I apologize for that, but my heart is here and I want to be able to contribute to the city. As a professional, I will feel useless to be here and not contribute to the city and then take my skill set to another city to contribute. So I want to be able to contribute to what has happened here.
Did I cover your basis? Anything further you guys gentlemen have? Do I have a motion? Motion to approve by Councilman Gordon and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 4-0. Welcome back to planning commission, sir.
Thank you. Is there a meeting tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
No. EDA tonight. I'm sorry, Mr. Collins.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Be here, on time. I'll announce the winner now before we move forward with anything else of the four-pack of illuminated Iscanyi tickets that we had a drawing online on our Facebook for. And the name that is in my hand is a Ms. Amanda Ludwig. I'll leave that up here in case you guys need that name. Amanda Ludwig. Ludwig. There we go. Ludwiggs. Moving on to K2, city council boards and commission meeting dates for 2023. Ms. Wood?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We do have a 2023 meeting scheduled before you. I would like to make note that it was discussed at committee of hold that to make sure that we have planning commission, planning commission, public hearing date set at a specific time. Those meetings will start at 6:00 p.m. come the new year. And then we do have three council meetings that will occur on Wednesdays instead of Tuesday evenings. And that'll be July 5th due to a holiday, August 2nd due to national night out recognition, and November 8th due to elections.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Burgley.
Second.
Second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 4-0. K3 is an ordinance amending city code chapter 262 sewer and water service charges. Ms. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, the current residential equivalent connection, which is considered a rec assessment table, was last updated in 2015. Staff did a comprehensive review of this and shared those that analysis along with a review of chapter 262, which is sewer and water service charges. It was recommended by staff and discussed at committee of the whole on November 15th to have some changes. The most impactful would be to our food and drink establishments, which was formerly labeled as restaurants. That is going to a square footage calculation instead of a per-seat calculation. And then we did recommend that there be 75% discount for outdoor seating as outdoor seating in Minnesota isn't year-round. And so we thought that it would be more fair to our restaurants that they receive a discount on counting those, that area of seating. Other changes that were made is that we have included this rec table within chapter 262. Previously, it was a standalone resolution, but it should be included within the ordinance for the city. There was, so we made reference to the rec table within that chapter. We also added in section 262-4H to allow for payments of the SAC and WAC charges not to exceed a certificate of occupancy or six months from the time that a building application is approved. And we did make the change that was notated by council committee about the mini-gulf and changing that instead of three rec charges to one. This ordinance has been posted for the required 10 days.
Any conversation or do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Burgley and second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 4-0. K4, ordinance amending city code chapter 160, fees. Ms. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So annually, we do review the fee schedule to see if there's any changes that are warranted. There are a few this year. So they include to remove the farmer's market fees as the city no longer does the farmer's market, to update the valve plate cover price from $100 to $115. This is just to cover the cost that the city incurs, to add copies of a USB drive, and then also to include cannabinoid license if the city does move forward with that, which will come further discussions at committee later this month. But if they did want to move forward, that will be in there as well. This has also been posted for the required 10 days.
Any discussion on this item or do I have a motion on this one?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Collison and second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 4-0. K5, which was added, the archery range discussion.
Yeah, this one was one that I wanted to bring up. I think that they have taken the targets down at the archery range already. And I just was curious, you know, why we did that. And I mean, I know that there was talk when we first started thinking about it, maybe having it be kind of a seasonal type thing, but I don't really know. I mean, hunting season is still going on right now for archery. And I was just curious, I mean, is there a reason that we really need to shut it down at any point during the year? You know, I mean, couldn't it just be up all year long?
I'm going to have Ms. Hilsheim talk on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We did originally decided, or the council originally decided to have it seasonally. And just to save on wear and tear of the targets and molding, et cetera, because they are made of hay. But if it's your wishes to keep it up longer year-round, that's possible. We just have to expect to replace targets more frequently, so.
Do we know, was it being used, chief? Are you aware of use, sir? From your
Was it like before, where I think Councilman Lundin and I seen like I mean, it was crazy when that thing first opened. It was like 15 people in 10 minutes. So it slowed down. Don't those tickets get really fragile, those targets, I mean?
The plan was to replace them every other year on a half and half basis or as needed.
Do they get fragile and turn to like glass or hard plastic in the cold?
No, because they're usually either hay, which it sounds like these ones are, where there's like a, you know, sort of like a styrofoam layered almost kind of a material. It's probably not styrofoam, but it's like that.
But the plastic barrier or the plastic target over it, that wouldn't get fragile?
That would make much of a difference. No, I mean, they're, they're pretty much made to be used all year round, I think.
It's more like paper and we've planned to flip them around and move the targets around accordingly. The shorter distance ones, we expect to see more wear and tear of and people hitting the shots the further
How did they look?
I personally haven't been out there yet, but
Okay. What, you just mean, did you hear from the people that took them down or?
Not yet. I think we based our decision on the Elk River Range and what they do. So that's where the basis came.
And they had, they had a date like early December or how long have they been down? Do we know that? Who's in charge of that? Is it Public Works?
No, it'd be Park and Rec.
Jordan.
It'd be Park and Rec.
Okay.
So Jordan would be the guy we'd have to ask.
Yeah.
I guess I'd like to see us just leave the targets up. And I know talking to Jordan, I don't remember exactly what he said the cost was for the targets, but I think they were really pretty, pretty cheap. I don't think they were very much.
More affordable as we do get a government discount for, from, direct from the manufacturer.
Right.
And it's, they're, they will be used less when it's, you know, 10 degrees outside.
Yes.
Nobody's going to stand out there.
If someone still wants to go out there, like you said, it's still bow season.
The only other thing to consider is we currently aren't plowing paths through there. So the public service director, Mr. Sylvester, did have just want to know what should be plowed and what the expectation would be for that. If it's just the sidewalk leading to, and the shooting range area or if each path, if a path needed to be plowed to each target, that would be more of a concern.
I don't bow hunt. What is the season?
Just, it ends at the end of the year, December 31st. But, but I mean, the thing is, if you, if you shoot, I mean, you might like to shoot any time of the year, you know? I mean, there's people that do bow fishing too and stuff. So, I mean, I think it's, it's, I think I just, I think if you were going to plow it, I guess I because you already plowed the parking lot for the, for the dog park, right? So I mean, it's really just the path to there. And then if we did just the shooting pad, you know, I think you could walk through the snow to whatever target you want to use. I don't think it's necessary to, you know, to plow to the target or anything like that, but
And then also, would you prefer to have a picnic table stay out there then throughout the season?
Probably would be nice to have a picnic table out there, yeah.
Someone have to plow around that. So that's just the other, okay.
Any more, did staff discuss more on the crossbows?
As far as the only
Having one range set up for crossbow use.
You just have to change ordinance, not an issue with that. And then you'd have to have different targets for the crossbow backstops. They're going to actually do a lot more target damage than the regular bows.
And just to make you all aware that we have had some arrows found within the shed behind the berm. The steel shed, yes. And that shed is slated to be removed in the near future, the next two years, I believe. But just a concern that for safety of staff in the shed and also for dog park visitors, that maybe we should consider netting for safety.
What's a net going to stop?
Something, at least putting something taller, like a net of some sort that would go between where the fence is between the archery range and the dog park area and go higher to make a barrier for the arrows to not go past.
I know when we originally had talked about that, that we did, there was a plan for some netting, but I think we switched kind of where we, I think we switched where we were going to have it, if I remember right.
Yeah.
And so then we didn't think we had a need for the netting. But, but yeah, I mean, maybe we should try to put something in the budget for next year for, for some of that. I don't remember what the cost was for it, but I have heard people that were using the dog park were a little nervous about having the arrows being shot so close to the dog park, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, well, I'd make a motion, I don't know if we can, but I'd make a motion to hang the targets back up. Or does that need a motion or you just need some direction from council or?
I think the reason why I say we should have a motion is because I believe we will have to amend the ordinance. Because if that does say seasonally, we need to post that for the 10 days. So this would allow staff to move forward with that, but then we would need to do an ordinance change. And then I think it should be made clear on the record that we will plow it as part of our second-day sidewalks, like our trails, just so there's no misconception that after a snowfall, those get done right away. Those will actually be in one of the last rotations, but it would get done. They'd probably take the side-by-side, or not the side-by-side, excuse me, the skid row out there when they're doing the sidewalks and trails part of plowing after they've done the big plowing.
I do agree that the ordinance will have to be amended to change as seasonally because I think it states which months exactly bows and arrows are permitted within the parks, so.
So do we need to do that now or do we need to change your ordinance, post it for 10 days and then come back with all that? Or do we, do you need a motion right now?
I think we should take a motion now so then staff will move forward and we'll just post it at this and then we'll come back to the following council meeting.
Okay.
Well, I'd make that motion then to do the plowing as a secondary plowing and then to, to rehang the targets and make it an all-year-round operation.
Motion from Councilman Gordon to leave the targets up year-round and to shovel the walkway to the archery range. And seconded by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 4-0. K5, we're moving and do, do we want to do these all at once, Mr. Becker? Or do you just, I mean, when you get up here, you're normally just, you go. So this would be K6, 7, 8, and 9. The truth and taxation, taxation presentation.
Yeah, so I'll run through the memo. We'll go through the presentation on the screens here. And we'll open it up for comments, questions, that kind of thing. Make sure we give, I'll try to be quick, make sure we have everybody has an ample opportunity. And then, yeah, then we'll go from there.
Fair enough. Floor's yours, sir.
Ace Ty, by the way, while you're setting up.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, so tonight we are looking at the final budget and final levy for 2023. Proposed final property tax levy is $4,042,954 and reflects an increased taxable market value for 2023 of 27.83%. So that means total market value for the city went up nearly 28%. The final proposed property tax rate is 57.66. That's a decrease of 2.3% from 2022 and a decrease of 27.5% from the 2018 tax rate of 79.6. For perspective, the 15-year average tax rate from 2008 to 2022 was 66.7. We'll get into why we talk about tax rates and what that means, why we, why we care. We've got a list in the, in the memo, we've got a list of a few adjustments that have been made to the budget since the last committee meeting in October when we last discussed it. I won't necessarily go through each of these items. Some of them are very small adjustments. But it did get a couple of questions on a few of these. We've got two line items in here, basically half and half for water and sewer for VFD PLC backups. If you're not aware, VFD is a variable frequency device. This works within the system itself and that is going to help set speed control, right? So you think about well pumps, lift station pumps, that kind of thing. This is to buy money to buy backups for that. Also PLCs. PLCs are programmable logic controllers. So those are also going to work in that same system. They're going to take an input like on or yes or no and have an output out, right? That says, tells another device on or off or yes or no, those kinds of things. In the end, if we don't have backups of those, something goes down theoretically. You can be without the main lift station. If we find ourselves in that boat during peak times, we've got about three, three and a half hours before sewage ends up in basements. So spending, what is it, about $19,000 bucks to have some backups on those, probably a good idea because if that goes out and we're told that we got six or, six weeks or six months to wait, that's not going to work out very well. So this goes to that idea that if, if we're doing things well and we're planning well and something goes wrong, nobody should ever know that anything even went wrong. We should be that far ahead of the game. So we got that. Let's see what else I have a question on. Dynamic sign, remember we had gone through and approved that. This would go over by the liquor store. We had originally just queued that up for 2024, but based on where we're at with land acquisition on that. And by the way, land acquisition probably be pretty, pretty cheap, much less than budgeted. But we, I think we should reasonably pull that forward into 2023. Still the same, same amount of money. It doesn't change the, doesn't change the levy on that, but let's see. Let's see if I got anything else to note before we get going. All right, so 2023 final budget and levy adoption. Just to make this clear, Department of Revenue provides guidance on how we run tonight's meeting. There's a few rules. One, the final levy cannot exceed the preliminary levy. So right now, what we have, final levy is set to be the preliminary levy, right? It is the same. We cannot go higher. We can lower it, but we cannot go higher. Rule number two, we have to discuss the budget and proposed property tax. And rule number three, we have to seek and allow for public comment and questions. So we will, we'll get to that. I'll provide some information and we'll, we'll get to the comments and questions. So first, I start with fiscal management. Good fiscal management, you got to consider the different components of the municipal budget, right? So it can be a kind of a big deal, right? There's a lot of components. If you look at the spreadsheets that I work out of, you're talking about tens of thousands of cells. And if, if you don't break it down at high levels into more manageable components, it is kind of an overwhelming thing. As you look at, as you consider those components, also got to consider those associated timelines. And in the end, good fiscal management should have us having small and steady increases or decreases in the levy or tax rate over time, right? If we're going down, we're going to go down slow and steady and not have to reverse course. And in the instances where it has to go up, we want it to go up in, in steady increments as well. So the components. First component, these are the broad categories of municipal budget. And this would be applicable for anybody, any city. First, operating revenues expenses, all right? Generally, revenues that you're going to get to cover that are going to come from general fund levy or different rates that you might have, right? It might be building permit fees or, you know, community center rentals or something like that, right? Expenses, when you think about expenses, you're generally looking at like a three or five-year average for maybe like attorney fees or engineering, things like that. Or we might be looking at just an actual last six-month actual, right? So I'm going through and considering what are we going to pay for internet or natural gas? Looking three years back doesn't, isn't helpful. I care about the most recent rates and that's it. Competency on that? It's not particularly hard to put that together in a constructive way. I think most cities do that fairly well. Next category would be intergovernmental revenues or expenses. For the revenue side, you're thinking about LGA, local government aid or grant monies. And on the expense side, you know, you're talking about regulations, right? Legislation that is going to compel some action, right? Competency on that, it's legally required. You are going to be competent on that. And if you are not, the state or federal government will make you. will make you competent. Capital projects. Capital projects, think about projects that require an engineer, all right? This is what we're, you know, so street projects, a new wastewater treatment plant, things like that are capital projects. There you might have revenues that are, come from levies or rates, right? Depending on whether or not this is like a, a street project, we're gonna pull money from the levy, if it's a water treatment plant, you would pull it from water rates. There, you're considering a ten, twenty-year horizon, right? I'm gonna wanna look out in, in the future and make sure that these things are well-planned. I wanna know twenty years ahead of time what's gonna happen, not two years ahead of time. A lot of cities will have either little or no capital improvement plan, or most cities will do a five-year plan, and the plan to fund things will simply be issue bonds. That's, that's how most cities do it, that's not how we do it here. But competency, in the end, because these are engineered projects, most cities are, I would, I would classify as competent, and this in large part because you're simply paying an engineer to be competent, and if that's not the case, then you find a new engineer. Last category, capital maintenance and replacement. So this is things like new plow trucks, squad cars, maybe tuck pointing brickwork, or a new roof, things like this. You know, the revenue structure can be the same, again, you're looking at that twenty-year horizon. I, I present a twenty-year plan to the council. Now, of course, behind the scenes, I'm running this, all these numbers out thirty-five or forty years, to make sure that I'm identifying things that might be a problem way out in the future and get ahead of them. But I think from my mind, a, a, as we think about how we compete against other cities, both to bring in new residents and retain residents, to bring in new businesses and to retain businesses, that is, that's the spot where there's a durable competitive advantage. Most cities are absolutely terrible at this, and this is something I think we're particularly good at, and that's where we gotta make, make sure we can maintain our focus. Property tax calculation. If you've heard me give me, if you've heard me give the budget talks before, you've noticed that I spend a lot of time talking about tax rates and not much time talking about levy. There's a few reasons for that, is one, a levy's gonna go up over time no matter what, just with inflation. However, the other problem is, is that if you only know the levy number, you don't really know what is going to happen to your taxes. The levy isn't the number used to calculate taxes, and levy is divided by market value to arrive at the tax rate. The tax rate is what is applied to your market value to decide, to calculate your taxes. So we see those, we see the, kind of the brief equations there at the bottom. Also, tax rate is way, way better at providing a comparison between cities and years, right? So if you wanna know how are you doing competing against Cambridge, or Princeton, or Bram, or Ham Lake, or whoever, comparing levies is not gonna be particularly helpful, and I've got an example of this later on in the slideshow, but comparing a tax rate can be particularly helpful. For anybody who doesn't know, this is an older statement, but I've got some, a little bit of information about where things are. Biggest takeaway that I, I get questions about that people maybe do or do not understand is, I'll just point right up here, step number two. Important just to remember, I've answered the question, I, I've had a lot of questions about that over time. Remember, that's the total, right? There are other taxing jurisdictions, city, county, school district, a lot of areas will have other special taxing districts, you know, development commissions, things like that. That is the, kind of the big takeaway on there, is, is just to remember that there is, there are multiple jurisdictions involved in that. Budget options to consider, right? So we are, we haven't set the final budget, we haven't set the final levy yet, that's what we're gonna talk about tonight. There are things that can be done. These are kind of the static, you know, ongoing things. Delaying street improvement projects, that is something that we've, we've done before. The projects that we are still working through were projects that were originally identified in 2010 and never funded, right? This was back when we, we didn't have a comprehensive plan the way we do now, and we kinda did things the way a lot of cities do, where we make a list and then don't ever say, how are we going to pay for it? So that, that's, that's not a good strategy, and we, and we've clearly reversed course on that one. Other ones, you could delay, eliminate capital maintenance replacing items. Generally, my recommendation would be is, is that if you want to do something in the capital maintenance replacement realm, generally the, the advice is, don't delay it because you're probably always going to be stuck for it, right? It's sort of, if you're not gonna, if you think, well, let's, let's see how long this plow truck lasts, you're still gonna pay for the plow truck. Now, you should not replace it until it needs to, but, you know, generally, you're, you're gonna get stuck on that, right? You cannot replace a roof, but eventually, if you don't replace that roof, you've just incurred additional costs. Same with the plow truck, you end up spending a lot of money to keep that thing going, and a lot of times, that's not gonna be a particularly great use of funds. Better idea on capital maintenance replacing items is just to make a determination as to whether or not it is needed, and if it's not needed, eliminate it, don't try to, don't try to delay it. The other, another option, reduce operating expenditures, this is a little more tricky, especially in the general fund, most of the operating expenditures are related to staff and labor, and a lot of times, you're gonna have certain obligations that are either by, through union contracts, statutory requirements, requirements at the federal level, that are gonna limit the, the overall options that you have on that. Budget summary, this is what we have right now. In total, we've got general fund revenues of four point eight-two-seven million, and budgeted expenditures in the general fund of four point six-six million, and right now, we've got a, a contribution to fund balance of one hundred and sixty-six thousand and change. The reason we do that is, is that based on our fund balance policy, the goal is to float the fund balance between twenty and seventy percent of next year's budgeted expenditures. And the goal there, and the way to think of it for, for, for a non-finance directed person is to think of fund balance as your rainy day fund, right? So that when you are in a situation where residents are, taxpayers are in need of a desperate tax break, some reduction, some help, you have to have already put something aside, otherwise, there's not necessarily a way to accommodate that. So that's where we're trying to get through there. We ended last year at forty percent, and it'd be nice to get at least a little bit more into that. Then we've got budget summary, this is gonna go through EDA, street construction, pavement management, the enterprise funds. Big takeaway here, I guess, would be in the water fund, it does show a loss of more than a million dollars, that is essentially to recoat the, the water tower. There, I think we budgeted eight hundred, eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars and change for that project, and we'll work on getting some, the bid and the bid alternate on that, and we'll see where those come in. Also, I guess if you haven't noticed, liquor fund revenues and expenditures are up quite a bit. We are the new store, we are selling a lot. We are selling a lot of liquor, and the store is doing really quite well. From my perspective, substantively, based on the, how conservatively I try to budget those revenues and expenditures, I, I would honestly classify that eighty-two thousand as being very near breakeven for that fund. I would expect to probably vastly exceed those revenues. We'll probably exceed that even this year still, so. So I think, I think we're in a good spot on that. So fiscal management, we've talked about this a little bit, right? We're looking for small and steady increases, decreases, don't wanna have to reverse course, right? If you provide a, a decrease in the tax rate of twenty-five percent one year, only to have to come back and raise it seventeen the next year, I don't know how many people are particularly happy about that, I think most people would rather see a consistent decline that can be counted on and be expected, and not, not provide a surprise when they open the tax bill. You know, again, we're gonna manage those components, we've got some ideas on operating expenses, right, some of the, kind of the generic categories for that. For capital projects, the thing to probably think about here is, is that the way we do this here, that is different than any other city I know except for one, is that we take that long-term approach of looking at twenty years, pulling those expenditures down, and understanding what is the total expenditure in every given year, and then coming up with the levy amount that allows us to cash flow that, so that those levy amounts are consistent over time, even though those expenditure amounts might change dramatically. Twenty-twenty-eight in the plan in the packet is a good example. Twenty-twenty-eight, we're scheduled to expend one point three-seven million, but the levy that year for street projects is only three hundred and seventy-three thousand, right? The goal is, let's levy a consistent amount, even though expenditures one year will be zero, and the next year might be one and a half million. We wanna, we wanna take that variability out of that. The other thing that we spend a lot of time talking about, and well on our way to, is avoid issuing bonds. We issued revenue bonds for the liquor store, and I think that until, which, by the way, is not paid by the levy, that's really what we're focusing on here, is, is debt that is otherwise paid through tax dollars directly. Borrowing money, even, even when interest rates are low, borrowing money is expensive. In my time, when I first got here and prior in Granite Falls, interest rates for municipal bonds were particularly low, and even at that, if you issued bonds and for a million dollars, you could figure on total interest and issuance costs being about two hundred and fifty thousand. Interest rates have come up. I did the math again, you're currently looking at closer to four hundred thousand, just to borrow a million bucks. You might get a rate that, you might get a rate that says, you know, four percent, boy, that sounds great, but once you pull that amortization schedule together and you, you figure on your issuance costs, it's, it's not, it's not as great a deal as, as it might first seem.
How much time was that, Mike?
What's that?
How much time was that, the four hundred thousand dollars owed on the million?
Well, that would, that, that's a generic twenty-year bond.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's just a generic kind of understanding of that.
Thank you.
Same would apply for capital maintenance and replacement. Twenty-twenty-five, we got scheduled a, a new public works building that had been on the pocket years ago, and is back on, and that year, we're gonna plan to spend two point eight million dollars. The levy for that year for that fund is only four hundred and ninety-four thousand. Again, let's even out those revenues, even out the levy, and let the expenses be variant, not the other way around. And of course, as we talk about this, we review those annually, and we only replace when needed. If, if, if we've got electrical fixtures at a particular building scheduled to be replaced, and they are functioning fine and they don't need to replace, then we don't do it, you just slide it into the next year, and you just continue to evaluate that. But knowing that you've got that money and you can take action when needed, that's, that's kind of the more important part there. Considerations in setting the levy, capital project funding, right? We kinda break this levy up into a, a few different parts, one of those components is dedicated for street projects, and we are in this seven-year span where we are still getting through the projects that were previously identified in, in, in 2010, and now we're getting kind of to that point where we are gonna be able to get there. Capital maintenance and replacing, again, as I've mentioned before, is, you know, we're looking, we're presenting and considering a twenty-year cash flow, but I am running that out thirty-five, forty years in the future, and on-street construction fund, we're good till, what, twenty fifty, I don't know, till twenty fifty or something, twenty fifty-four? And I can clearly understand the projects that we are going to do, how we are going to pay for them, and we are not going to need to issue bonds for that work. And if we're, barring unforeseen circumstances, come, what is it, September of twenty thirty, we should, I did, actually did the math, requested some data from the state auditor's office, we would become the largest city in the state, that is levy debt-free in twenty thirty. So we're on a good path, we just need to kinda keep maintaining that, maintaining that course. In the general, general fund fund balance, should note that we did have twenty eighteen improvements related to the hotel, that at the time, liquor fund did pay for, and so the general fund does transfer annually twenty-six thousand back to the liquor fund to make the liquor fund whole, that would be over a ten-year period, and the, the final year, that would be in the twenty twenty-nine budget year. So we got the proposed levy, and this is where we schedule that, that breakdown, right? I've got, at the top, I've got the general fund levy, capital maintenance levy, which is, that is all general fund capital items, right? That's how we understand that Fund nine twenty. Street construction levy in Fund four twenty-five, we do an EDA levy, that's four one oh eight. The abatement levy is also hotel-related, we have to identify that as a separate item, but functionally, it ends up being a levy within the general fund, but we do have to separate that out per Minnesota Department of Revenue. Then we've got the debt service levy, right? So this is the money that you, that we need to collect in order to be able to make payments on bonds that have already been issued. And like I said before, is if we can get to, if we can get through to September twenty thirty, all of those will be gone, and that levy debt will also be, be gone. We can see the levy history, we've got some, kind of some swoops in there. Again, I don't spend a huge amount of time on levies, I'm a little more into the tax rates, and we'll get into a little bit of why. So I get the question about, well, what, why do I care about the tax rate? What is the tax rate? And functionally, the tax rate is the number that is used against your property value to calculate your taxes. Whatever the levy is, it is the tax rate that actually makes the difference. So I put together a, an example. One of these is actually where I live, and one of these is a property that is next door to the town I used to live in, and I'm just gonna use this as an example to highlight two things. So if I look at City A, they have a total levy of a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, and if I look at City B, they have a levy of eight point six million. Most people, with no other information, you say, well, which city do you wanna live in? Well, clearly, you wanna live in City A, a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar levy, taxes have got to be lower there, right? So, you know, highlight the one fifty-two. Now, if I told you that City A has a tax rate of two hundred and ninety-seven percent, and City B has a tax rate of thirty-four percent, you know, okay, well, maybe you're picking up on something, but, you know, the lower number seems like a good thing, right? And now if I say, all right, in City A, this middle-of-the-road property is market value seventy-nine thousand, and in City B, this property, middle-of-the-road, for that market, three hundred and fifty thousand. All right, well, geez, I, you know, which one do you wanna be in, right? Well, you probably, you probably would think you want the lower market value, right? Better chance of having a lower taxes. City B, city tax in twenty twenty-two, and this is actual number, twenty twenty-two, city tax was just under twelve hundred dollars on a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. City A, believe it or not, that city tax for that seventy-nine thousand dollar parcel is more than fourteen hundred dollars. And this is why I don't spend a huge amount of time talking about the levy, to the extent that it's required and to the extent that it's useful information, I think that's great. But if you only know the levy, you don't really know what your taxes are actually going to be. If you know the tax rate, you can absolutely tell what your taxes are going to be, especially if you can compare that tax rate to the prior years, you can understand if you're gonna have an opportunity for your taxes to go up or down. So the proposed tax rate, as things stand now, proposed tax rate is fifty-seven point six-five percent. Twenty twenty-two, we had a certified tax rate, when it was all said and done, of fifty-nine point zero one two, so changed from prior, where it's down, tax rate is going down two point three percent. The simple way to understand that is that if your home is worth the same last year, or same this year that it was last year, your city taxes will go down two point three percent. That is the simple math and the simple explanation. For perspective, and I touched on this before, average tax rate over prior fifteen years, sixty-six point seven percent, so the proposed rate is thirteen and a half percent below the fifteen-year average for the city of Iscany. And here we see the tax rate, again, we see some swoops, but what we, what I like to see here is the end of the graph, is where we have this steady decline. That's, that's what we wanna be seeing, is we want that tax rate to go down. Tax rates go down, that's how we end up with taxes going down. This is a whole lot of information, but I include this because I think it's good to make sure that people understand where we've been. Anybody that says, hey, I would love to be able to look at that and not on a screen in the council chambers, absolutely contact me, I am happy to share and/or discuss any of this information. Gives good information about where the levy's been, where market values have been, you know, where, where levies have been, tax rates have been, all those kinds of things, there's a lot of good information in there. If anybody wants a copy of this workbook, I'm more than happy to share. And when we get into this, this is where we say is, you know, I, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, is that whether anybody likes it or not, we are competing against other cities, right? And we have to be competing to win, one way or another. And, and I brought this up years ago, and said basically, is if we're gonna compete against other cities and we're gonna compete to win, we ought to be holding ourselves accountable and putting something up on the screen at least once annually at this meeting that says, are we succeeding? Are we, are we outperforming our counterparts? And you can see back in twenty eighteen, we were sitting at seventy-nine point five nine. We, we were up there. We were well behind Princeton. And since then, through the twenty twenty-two certified tax rate here, we're down to fifty-nine and that was a drop of nearly twenty-six percent in the tax rate over that five-year period. That is considerably better than any of the cities that we're competing against. That doesn't mean that we're done. That doesn't mean that that's the, that's it, but that means we're on the right course. Keep marching that tax rate down. There we go. So it's, at this point then, per the Department of Revenue, we most certainly need to open this up for questions, comments, and concerns.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. At this time, if there's any questions that you may have, feel free to step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record and please freely speak.
Great Larson, three eleven Eighth Avenue Southwest. This is what I see here on this taxing, estimated market value, every year it goes up. So my property tax goes up. Last year I paid three thousand twenty dollars. Ultimately, I'm going to pay three thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars. That's four hundred dollars out of my pocket. I'm on social security. I didn't get that kind of increase. It says right here thirteen point seven percent increase. Now, you're saying our taxes are going down. I don't see it.
Is that the cities portion?
Yeah.
Or are you looking at the total portion?
I'm looking at the, right here where it says my taxes are going to be. So you're telling me taxes are going up?
Is that, is, is that the cities portion or is that all three, school district, county, and city?
Last year's.
Yep, so.
I think the state did a horrible job at printing those out, to be honest. Mine looks horrible too and it's confusing. Mr. Becker, I sent you mine. And when you looked at mine, you were like, well, this is interesting. Well, I thought the same thing. I, I know what our tax rate is and it is going down. We, we can prove that time after time, which any of this information is, is available to the public. But he, he's in the same boat as I am, is he's confused by what the state sends us, which is ultimately is the state and the county that's going up. It's not the city. So if you wouldn't mind, bring that to Mr. Becker.
And if you're.
And he could dissect that for you.
It is, it is an increase still in the ci- city tax. It's, but the rate is going down, but as the value of the home goes up, so what I think you're probably seeing there is the increase.
But the city's not in control of that, Councilman Gordon.
The city's in control of the tax rate. The lower we bring the tax rate, the less that percentage of increase is going to be. But as the value, we're not in control of the value of the property.
Property value.
Right, we're not, we can't, the, the county sets the assessed value, that is true. But I think what you're seeing there though is the percent of increase versus last year's city tax. It's not the tax rate, it has nothing to do with that.
It's the value of the home.
But that's what the perception everybody's confused on it.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
Yeah, rightfully so too.
Right.
I was.
I think in this case and in your case, send these people to the county to do that.
Wait, every year. You've been here, you've seen.
No, but, but.
Everybody's been here. We've, every year we go over the same thing.
No, but what I'm saying is, there's a meeting you can go to in the county to fight your.
Which is true.
Property value. I mean, I would encourage you to go to, go, go fight your.
Go fight the county, go fight the state. That's where the ultimate fight is.
You have a good chance of winning that, so.
The county is assessing the value of your home, so they could just, if you're not letting them in the door, which I don't let them in my door. So they're going to say, oh, your, your house is worth three hundred thousand dollars. Well, I only paid a hundred and sixty-four, five years ago or six years ago. Now they're saying it's three hundred thousand? There goes your tax rate.
Yeah, fif- fifty thousand dollar increase on a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar home is.
That's crazy. That's nuts. And that's the county doing that.
Yeah, I would.
No way.
So it's, it's the Board of Equalization meetings in, in, for local ones in April and then for the county in June, if I remember correctly. That, those are the meetings where you go and say, you guys are wrong. Like this isn't, this is not the value. If I, and basically your case is, you're going to say, if I tried to sell it, I couldn't get that. And they are by, by statute, they have to assess at between ninety and one hundred and five percent of the actual value you would actually get if you actually sold it.
But is he not taking a gamble that if you let him in the door, then it could possibly raise it? Am I, am I right or wrong?
I don't know. That's an awfully darn big increase on value.
Yeah, fifty thousand, I couldn't see that.
I don't, I don't really.
I don't see that.
I don't, I don't, I don't foresee him doing worse. Man, that's a, that's a really sizable jump by percent. I mean, really sizable jump in value.
Right, and, and we're getting the blame at, at a city level when, and it's not even the city doing it. I hear frivolous spending or I hear you're raising my tax rate. No, we're not. Your, your tax rate's declining. However, your property value is going through the roof and that's what's getting you in your, your property taxes.
You heard Mr. Becker say, go, go to the county.
The county controls it.
County meeting you can go to.
And that's, I'm going. I'll see you there.
Mayor, if I may, I would like to just make an announcement that in looking at the Iscany County's website, they do have their truth and taxation meeting on Monday, December twelfth at six P M. In their boardroom at the county government center, if anyone was interested to know for the county's TNT meeting.
I'm going. Step up, sir. If we didn't answer anybody's question clearly to where you're, you're, you're good and you're okay to, I don't want you to leave here. Nobody, let's just face it, nobody's going to agree. I, I shouldn't say, let me, let me think about how I want to put this. Nobody's going to like what's happening here. I don't like it either. But at least I want you to understand. I don't want you to leave here pissed off because you, you think we're getting screwed here. I mean, ultimately we are getting screwed, but, but it's not at a city level. These guys have, we've all sat up here and worked hard to make sure that every resident in the city had a negative or declining tax rate. It's not a negative tax rate, I shouldn't say that, but it is declining and we're showing you that in black and white. It's declined since twenty eighteen. Ultimately, really twenty nineteen is when it started to decline. And, and we work hard in trying to keep that steady as we keep that tax rate declining. But it, it seems like what, what we do up here, then the county or the state react against us. So it's a, it's an ongoing fight. And, and for four years, I put up a hell of a fight, if you ask me, and I hope the new regime puts up even a better fight, but.
There may be, I mean, there is a huge change in county commissioners this year.
There is, and let's hope that goes in our benefit too. But I, I don't, I don't want you to leave here not understanding is my point. I want you to understand what's going on. Doesn't mean you have to agree with it, because believe me, I'm not going to agree with it, but at least understand. And, and you're not, I'm not going to be happy. I'm pretty sure you won't be happy, but at least we understand. And that's, if you don't understand or don't get your question asked, feel free to either come up to Mr. Becker after this meeting or call him. He's, he'll bore you for two hours talking about numbers, so. I mean, me, I always found myself in his office that he'd talk to me and, oh, butterfly. You know, but, you know, it, it happens. He's, but he knows what he's doing. Sorry to interrupt you, sir. Step up, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Jeff Duncan, four oh seven Twelfth Avenue Northwest. A couple, a couple of questions and a couple of points. So first, Mr. Becker, I sent you some email questions today. Really appreciate your quick response and the information you provided. Very helpful. Also have an appreciation for the difference between the levy and the tax rate. And can understand that while the tax rate's going down, nobody's city taxes in the audience are going down, right? So with market values increasing the way they have due to the real estate market and you see that the taxable market value in the, in the city went up, what, twenty-nine percent, I think, year over year?
Yeah, twenty-eight percent total market value.
So if your, if your tax rate drops like a half a percent or whatever, like it's showing up above, but your market value is going up twenty-eight percent, you end up with a twenty-three percent levy increase, right? So that's the part the city does control. They're asking for a levy that's twenty-three percent bigger than last year. Because we can say, not because, I don't want to say that, but it's twenty-three percent more levy you're, you're grabbing from everybody than last year. That's a huge increase. And if you look back over the last handful of years, it was nine point eight last year, nine point eight percent increase the year before and a twelve point seven percent increase just in the levy side of it the year before that. Over the last four budget cycles, that's one point six three million dollars out of that four million dollar levy, just over the last four budget cycles. So that's what the city can control. I get that you guys can't control the taxable market value. That's all market driven and everything else, right? But if, if the city wasn't trying to get that much more money year over year, the market values can fluctuate as they want. If the taxable market values went up forty percent next year, but you guys still came in with the same levy amount, most of our property taxes would be pretty similar. Now, everybody's house is going to change a little bit different the way the county checks it, right? But your percent of that overall pie is going to be the same, so it's going to be pretty similar. But when the market values go up so much and the levy goes up that much, then you're keeping that tax rate pretty, pretty similar. And all of a sudden, my city taxes increase eight point, eighteen point nine percent year over year. But we're trying to call it a five percent tax cut or whatever the number was, right? So those things just don't add up very well and there's a ton more money being taken out year over year over year, but the market values are going up. So this slide can look great, but my taxes, my property taxes overall total, like five, six years ago, were half of what they are now. Not just for the city, but overall, right? The county for me went up three point four percent. The school district was pretty even, actually dropped a little bit. But the city this year was almost a nineteen percent increase, just on my property. Not everybody's is going to be the same and there were no improvements, no drastic or dramatic improvements that were made there. So that's what I'm trying to understand. The seven hundred and sixty thousand dollar levy, levy increase last year to this year, the one point six million dollar levy total over the last four budget cycles. What are we getting for that as citizens? What additional services? What, what are we getting out of that? That's my question. Thank you.
So Jeff, thank you for emailing this morning. I do appreciate people that actually want to get involved and actually ask questions and actually want to get a copy of the budget. I wish I could share that with more people more often. I think that'd be really, really great. To the end question of what are we getting? To be honest, a lot of it is not stuff that you're necessarily going to see, right? So when we, when we say, all right, let's levy this even amount for capital projects or for capital maintenance and replacement. We get a new squad car that may or may not get noticed. A street on South Brookview, depending where you live, may or may not get noticed at all. Those types of things are what we're looking to pay for.
And I don't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Becker, but yet I do. In twenty nineteen, when I walked in and sat in the seat. Our budget, the, what's the word I'm looking for, road maintenance, Mike?
Street construction.
Was taken out of our budget. So pretty much we were just going to have potholes and gravel roads and we were going to go back to the eighteen hundreds of what the city of Iscany looked like. I thought it was ridiculous, so I asked the council what they thought. Should we should put that back in there? I got no fight, no pushback, absolutely. Let's put it back in there. As you see, there's a lot of roads around town that are being resurfaced, redone. So there were, there were some things that were not in our budget that we essentially needed for public works, for police, for. Our police department was ten years behind four years ago. I don't know if anybody's aware of that, but they were. Their equipment, whether it was a radio, a squad car, a computer, they were ten years behind. Who the, who the hell do we expect our chief to catch with ten-year-old equipment? I'd be ahead of him and I'm not even computer savvy, but I'd be ahead of him and his department. Our roads, they were horrible. When I bought here six years ago, I laughed. I, I bought a new car essentially because I was tired of going through tires, shocks, a front end on one vehicle. I mean, it, it was bad. Sorry, Mr. Becker.
That is, that is a good point. I mean, some of what happened, when I got here in twenty seventeen, some of what took place, especially in those first few years and as I rolled out a twenty-year plan for all of these capital items, a lot of it was getting things up to par. And that's not, that's not fun. That's not awesome. You know, there was no schedule for replacing squad cars. There was no schedule for replacing plow trucks. Back then, if.
There was no plan, period.
You know, back then when we, that first year when we would go through the budget process, you know, the police chief would come and ask for two squad cars. Simply because he knew there was no chance he was going to get two, but he thought maybe if I ask for two, I can get one maybe.
I used one at that.
And, and unfortunately, when you kick the can down the road like that, at, at some point, and this is where I talk about why it's not necessarily a good idea to delay capital. Expenditures is, I mean, you, you generally are never going to get away from those. And we've talked about this with the council, that, you know, one option is you could say, all right, let's fold up the police department, right? Let's, let's, we'll just contract with the county, right? That, some cities do that. And that sounds like a great idea, except the first thing the county's going to do is they're going to make you pay for all the labor, okay? That's fine, you're paying for personnel, but they're also going to ask, okay, now what equipment do you have to contribute? Oh, you didn't invest in any, so you have none? Great. You can pay for that now too. We'll bill you for it. So no matter how you do it, you're, you're not going to get away from those core, those core items. So that's some of it. And the understanding that, you know, when we've, we've got a plan that gets us to a point where we can be debt free. And we can start to see those debt levies drop off and see the, then the net levy decrease. And when we can get to a point where the liquor store is making some extra money and can start transferring more, when those types of things start to happen. You're going to get to be able to see more and more rapid decreases in the tax rate, but we've got to get, kind of get, get through that backlog initially. And we're still, unfortunately, still working through that. The street projects we're doing now are the things in twenty twenty-two. The things that we're doing in twenty twenty-two are items that were identified as needed in twenty-ten. That's, that's, that's unfortunate, but.
So the point that I'm looking for, and it, it was a very good point by Mr. Duncan, is what are they getting for, for what they're paying for?
Well, a lot, again, a lot of it is the kind of stuff that, that does go unnoticed. Some of it is, you know, take, some of it is, is you wake up in the morning, you realize your street has been plowed and you maybe didn't think twice about it. Well, that's because somebody got paid to come up at three in the morning and plow the street. Some of the, some of the things that we end up having to spend money on are intergovernmental expenses, which I noted in the presentation, right? There are things that we have to do that are obligated by state and federal statutes that we don't have a choice. We simply are going to, we're simply going to abide by those requirements. Some of it is, some of it is these types of meetings. Some of it is, stormwater is a particularly good example that I've had to explain numerous times is the only reason we have a stormwater utility is the state required it. They said you will manage all the stormwater that falls on your land and you will meet these standards. And if you don't, we will fine you a thousand dollars a day. Okay, now the, the state doesn't give you money for those types of things, but they certainly make it clear that you will comply. So some of that is, and, and then when we think more generically, in the general fund budget, PD is, is far and away the largest part of that budget. Approaching half the, half of the total general fund budget is, is just, just police. That does not include fire. You know, and, and that's, that's a large part of what we're spending money on.
We're getting, like PD is an example, we're, in the last, I don't know, four or five years, we've been getting the squad cars more on a replacement schedule.
Regular schedule, yeah.
Before, there never really was one.
Because there's a plan that started in twenty nineteen that was never there. There's a plan for everything and all those plans are open to every resident in this community. They can come right to. They can come right to City Hall's front desk and ask for the certain plan that they're interested in, and it'll be printed in black and white and color. We do have some colored items, and handed right to them. You just have to, I mean, I hate to say it this way, but you just got to be nosy, you know? And Mr. Duncan, obviously, you were nosy because you, you got your stuff together here. I hear another important one here. It feels like you're going to punch me in the face, so come on with that.
No, absolutely not. Just, I also appreciate the work you've done over the last four years. Just a, a simple follow-up. All the, all the items that were brought up, I would imagine were things that we were still doing last year, too, right? We were plowing the streets at three in the morning. We were working on street projects. We had intergovernment things that we still had to do because we were regulatorily complied and had to do them. The levy this year is still seven-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars, three-point-two-whatever million to four million, last year to this year. That's a huge increase. If, I'm at work, I manage about a four-million-dollar budget for my department as well. If, if I wasn't delivering a bunch more stuff, but I walked into our budget meetings, which we just had a hellacious couple of months doing, and wanted to jump up twenty-three percent, and couldn't explain very well what, what new things I was going to deliver, how I was going to drive more things for the business. So in this case, what are we driving for the citizens and the city? There's no way I would get that approved, right? So that's what I'm trying to understand, because it's not a for-profit business at the city, right? It's a, it's a for-the-citizen business in the city. For that extra three-quarters of a million dollars, what are we delivering? If it's better capital planning, I appreciate that, because that stops a lot of those peaks and valleys that you talked about, right? But I wouldn't think three-quarters of a million dollars more this year is capital planning, because you guys would have been doing that last year and the year before, right? It might be a little more this year than it was last year to help ramp up the capital plan, but that's a huge increase, because our taxable market values went way up. But you could get away with a three-and-a-half-million-dollar budget, and the tax rate would drop down, and, you know, I might be up seven percent instead of nineteen, right? So, thank you.
I've never taped your mouth or tied your hands, Mr. Becker, so tell them as it is.
I, I appreciate the comments. I mean, this is, that's what this is for, is, I mean, give everybody an opportunity, and, you know, council have an opportunity to make some choices, or, you know, yeah, that's what this is for.
I, I guess the only question before you go on, Mr. Becker, is, I might know, but, Mr. Duncan, how long have you lived in the city of Isani?
Twenty years.
How many amenities have you had in twenty years? When is the, when would you say the most of those amenities came? Let's narrow it down even smaller. Let's be honest here, Mr. Duncan. There we go. Okay. When I came aboard, this was known as a bedroom community. That kind of rubbed me the wrong way. I wanted, as if we're going to go to work in a horrible city, where I grew up, mind you, and I came there to here to escape that. But yet, I was finding myself working there, coming home to my bedroom community, and spending my money still down south. Why wouldn't I want to live and spend my money right where I pay taxes? So in my mind, it was, hey, gentlemen, I think we need more amenities for this community. Hence, is that the way it happened? Possibly. Possibly not. But I'm, I'm going to go on a whim and say that, could I be the one to be blamed? Absolutely. Because I wanted something for our residents to do. Was the amphitheater a, a, a good thing to do? Fifty percent of me says no. Fifty percent of me says yes. So I'm stuck in the middle. How are we going to get our money back? Good question. That's where I'm fifty percent no. Fifty percent yeah, we can go enjoy plays, kids, things, concerts. Could be many a things that come out of there, but boy, it's going to be a hell of a long time getting our money back out of that thing. The splash pad is another one this community's wanted. It's due and budgeted and planned for to come in twenty-twenty-three. That could be a huge chunk of this money. I did push for that one. I think it should be charged, discounted to our residents, mind you, but charged full boat to anybody else that comes in. Some of these council members didn't think that was a good idea. They can deal with that. But I, I, I thought it should be, this illuminate Isani, a council member that's not present, I'm not going to say his name, I'm sure you can do the math. He wanted illuminate Isani. I did the homework years ago. I was shot down by my predecessor when I was in Park and Rec. So when I became mayor, I entertained it, just as Councilman Collison wanted a sledding hill. Pretty inexpensive. And that was to do with Councilman Gordon's idea. Why can't we use the compost? Good idea.
I don't think that was, I can't take credit for that. I think that was public work, I think that was Matt, Matt's idea.
Which could be, but I think you were, you were behind it and saying the cheapest way possible, and it worked out.
Sliding hill was, I think we got it done for like seven-thousand dollars.
It smelled like crap for a little while, but it was all right, you know? Ultimately, the smell's not there no more. I know, because my kids use it. I'm there, the minute a snow falls, I'm there. In, in the first year, it smelt bad, but now we have grass on it. The smell's gone. It's busy all the time. There's an amenity. I mean, these are all amenities that I wanted the community to enjoy. I wanted them to ultimately, the, the illuminate Isani, I ultimately was stuck again in the middle. I wanted it to be donations. People wanted it to be chargeable. How are we going to get our money back? I mean, it was kind of a back and forth thing. I'm one vote of five up here. I did what I could to push for four years to get these amenities that I felt our community needed, and, and I did my best. Could this be why our tax rate is, is going high? Absolutely, it could be. I'm not going to take that away from myself, let alone, hopefully, these guys wouldn't either. But some are better politicians than me, so, you know, it, it is what it is. Mike, like I said, I never taped your mouth. I never tied your hands. If that's what this, this is reason, a, as I see on social media, it's called frivolously spending. If, if trying to get amenities for this community is frivolously spending, then, then I guess I'm guilty. If improving our public safety and our police department is frivolously spending, then I'm guilty. Other than that, social media can kiss my behind. Mike, I never tied your hands. I never taped your mouth. If that's what, why this tax rate is the way it is, by all means, tell these people that's what it is.
I, I won't, I won't second-guess your statements. Those are, those are to you. No, I, and, you know, the only thing I ever ask of the council is, I, I say my piece, and council makes the decisions, and council will do what they will, and I will get on board. And whether I think it was a great decision or a terrible decision, I will get on board. That's how that works, so. But we should give...
I don't know that we're answering the question of what they're getting though, to be honest.
Luke Merrill, two-two-three Broadway Street. I've been up here a bunch of times. Obviously, I believe that the city's spending too much money on some of these amenities. As everybody knows, my opinion's very out there on Facebook and all that. The biggest thing that I have a problem with, and that a lot of residents have a problem with, is again, what Jeff brought up. You're saying that the taxes are going down, but you're being taxed more because you're spending more money. You're spending money in a way that's somewhat irresponsible. Again, I love the liquor store project. It's a great investment, but the way it was bonded for is not fiscally responsible. And then you have four-hundred-thousand dollars projected for a splash pad, hundred-thousand dollars for illuminated Isani, quarter-million dollars for the amphitheater. You have one-point-two-million dollars that was gifted to the hotel in basically taxpayer revenue. You have all this money that's being spent in a way that you could rather spend that money, pay off the bonds, and like he said, it's costing us four-hundred-thousand dollars a ye, for the loan on the liquor store for one-million dollars of basically loan. So you're saying, if you take, that's almost two-million dollars to pay off that bond, you would be saving the city residents almost a million dollars. And that's unreal for, you know, everybody. A million dollars divided by six-thousand residents is a lot of money. So the fact that these improvements and amenities are being added are great, but in the long run, they're affecting everybody, and they're costing everybody money. One of my properties went up three-hundred-and-forty-three percent this year in tax, and what I have to pay for taxes. Three-hundred-and-forty-three percent in one year. So that's one of those things where it takes money out of everybody's pocket. I'll be able to pay it, yeah, that's fine, but not everybody here can. Not everybody here is on an income that they can work harder and make more money, like the older gentleman. He's on a fixed income. And when you are saying, all this, all these numbers are great, but when it comes down to is when they get a tax statement and they have to pay more money, it costs everybody. And your guys' decisions are costing everybody money. You know, the illuminated Isani, cool, it's a great amenity, but this isn't a Dyna. It's a blue-collar community. Not everybody here makes a lot of money, and I think we need to spend less money, and long-term, it'll be better for the residents. And that's what I have to say.
Out of all the things we've added to parks and events, the street dances, I don't recall one meeting where we approved any of the stuff where one resident has been up here to say, don't do it.
Not one, including yourself. That is true.
That is true. You can, you can look back. I, I don't recall anyone...
That's before my time.
Anyone coming up here and saying, I don't think we should have street dances anymore. Costs the city money. I don't think we should have a sledding hill.
I wouldn't have been either.
I'm talking about amenities that the city can use freely, that city residents, the archery range. We didn't get anybody coming in here. I thought, Jimmy, you had a great idea putting that in.
But that was eighteen-thousand dollars, too. I mean, that's, and that's just like the sledding hill, I mean...
Doesn't matter. You're spending money.
We're spending money. It does matter. When you spend, when you spend two-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand dollars on an amphitheater that nobody uses, that's a lot of money to spend on something that nobody uses.
But you take all the things that we've done.
Does nobody use that? Is that a true statement?
An archery range and a sledding hill that gets used like crazy, both of those things are inexpensive, low-maintenance activities that we can all enjoy. And, you know, those things are, are...
A small percentage will enjoy them. Probably not enough.
Relative to small, you're right, yes.
Well, I'll go on the record right now and say I'm against the splash pad as a resident. And when I'm inaugurated in a month, I'll be against it at city council as well. That way, nobody can say that nobody was against any of this. Also, against the full repaint on the water tower project. We had talked about this before, and I'm excited to be on council and make better decisions, so.
Good luck with that. Step up, if you wouldn't mind, sir, just step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Then you ask any, anything you want, sir.
Yes, Sefransky, eight-thirty-three Golden Way. I'm really ignorant. I'd just like to have it explained about the money to the hotel.
So before my time, which was five years ago, right? So six years ago.
Yeah, we cut the, no, that, by the time we got through the hearings, that was in twenty-eighteen.
Okay.
Yes, that was in twenty-eighteen, because that was represented on my financials at the end of the year. The, the long and short of that was, in order to build that, we basically forgave sack and whack fees, which, when you start counting those up per room, is a significant amount of money. There was a cash subsidy, and there was ongoing...
Let me hold it there, because he's going to sugarcoat, and I won't. He can correct me if I'm wrong in my numbers. Eight-hundred-thousand dollars in cash was given to that hotel. One-point-eight-million dollars total in amenities was given to that hotel, so they would build there, by the city. Can we build it together? I was not. Councilman Gordon was not. Otherwise, everybody else was. But that was twenty-eighteen, and twenty-nineteen is when I came to the door, which I, I think Mr. Becker did a phenomenal job of trying to balance that and how we were going to pay that, how that should be paid off. When did you say, in twenty-twenty-nine, right?
What's that?
That'll, so twenty-twenty-nine, we'll, we'll be free and clear of that. Uh, that was not a bond thing. That was just taken out of our general fund, correct?
Almost like a partnership with...
Oh, tax abatement partnership.
Yeah, so there was a few things. So, yeah, the eight-hundred-thousand in the end substantially came out of the general fund. That was, and that was a big hit. I mean, that's all that was. We gave, forgave the sack and whack fees, which ended up being a subsidy from the water and sewer funds. And then there was abatement, right? And so an abatement is basically, they're getting, they're getting money back on their taxes. That's basically how that works. And that is capped after ten years at a hundred-and-fifty-two thousand. I'd have to double-check that. There's a particular schedule for that. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know that was quite a one-point-eight-million, but yeah, it was clear over a million dollars to, to have them...
And, and I can clearly say that that was driven by one guy that sat right here, and it wasn't this guy. And then these guys were buffaloed, is what happened. I was pretty clear in that in a public meeting, that he was great at rewording and hiding stuff in an agenda. It worked great. I think there are a lot of, a lot of people out here that are shaking their heads. They've been here, they've seen it, especially Mr. Merrill. He's definitely seen it. He, he, he hides stuff. He shoved it in the consent agenda, and it worked. Another great politician. Me, I, as you see, I probably got in trouble a few times in four years, because I don't, I don't sugarcoat. I'd rather you understand, you, and you might not agree, but at least you're not leaving here upset, and you understand. And, and that's how I've always been, and I always will be. That's just me. But no fault to any staff either, because they did what they were told to do. It was one guy that totally screwed not ever, not only everybody here, but everybody here and everybody here. And we're, we're still paying for that until twenty-twenty-nine. That's a big chunk of this. We sure in the hell hope so.
Well, your house will be valued at a million and a half then.
Yeah. If there's anything else we can answer for you, please step up to the podium. State your name and address for the record, and, and like I said, I'm not going to sugarcoat it to you, so don't, don't sugarcoat it to me.
That's good. Don't sugarcoat it. Jason Burke, two-zero-eight Richard Avenue. I just want to kind of, also with that hotel, even though I hate the hotel, I mean, that, there is plans. It's just kind of like our budget or our levy that, that, that eventually will be paid off, and that will bring money in. Isn't that, isn't that right? That's kind of like what Mr. Becker's doing for, that's why our levies are going up, is because we're trying to prepare for the future. Even though you can't tell us what exactly that is, which I would really like to see or hear, I understand the idea. But also, on that splash park, I guess I'm against that, too. I don't know why, why do we bring these things in? I, I can understand why we bring these things in for kids. That's great. But why is it that we have to pay for it? Why isn't that you put, okay, put it in there, be a business, and then have, have people pay when they come there? I mean, I don't understand why is it that us taxpayers, everyone, has to pay for something that, I mean, I, I love things for kids to do. I really do, so don't get me wrong. But I shouldn't have to pay for it.
Little over half of that was given to us in a grant.
Yeah, I don't know much about it. And I'm just going to go crazy on it, but...
So a little over a half of that was paid for with a grant from the state. We're getting hit in the state taxes there.
I feel like you guys are just kind of trying to beat gamers to it, so...
He just said four-hundred-thousand dollars. We are putting in four-hundred-thousand dollars. We are getting four-hundred-thousand dollars from the state.
Whatever it is, we're paying for it. I mean, you guys don't realize that. You guys keep trying to sugarcoat everything. We're, we're paying for it. So, I mean, I would just appreciate, yeah, I, I know I have to pay stuff. I appreciate our sheriff or our, our police, and I know those are things that we have to pay for, and all these amenities, and, you know, I, just like Mr. Duncan said, where is this money coming from? Or what is it doing for us? The only thing I can think of, Mr. Becker, is that it's for the future stuff. And I, I totally understand what you're saying, because we never planned for that before. So that's, that's good on your part for planning for our future, but you just went through the, the whole, what you call it, and you said, small increases. And this doesn't seem like a small increase here. So I appreciate your time.
You know, up here, we got to make decisions that will please one person and not the other. Splash pad, for example, you don't want to pay for it.
Three-quarters of the city did, and a third didn't.
Yep, you know, and then...
Or even if it was half and half.
Yeah. On the same time, if we charge for it, that means we have to staff it. You can consider a hundred... You can consider a hundred thousand dollars a year easy for one staff member. That includes their insurance, their hourly rate, their work comp, all that. You can easily say every employee is about a hundred grand a year. There, it, there, there'd be more money into staffing it than it is just to provide it to our public.
Like gamers do it. You know, well, the only work to do it, so.
Like I said.
You're not.
I don't, I, I don't shoot archery anymore, but I'm not going to say, well, why did I have to pay for it? You know?
It's only twenty thousand dollars though.
You know, well, I don't care what the price tag is.
Nor did I, but.
It's a price that people have to pay regardless if it's six grand or a hundred grand or whatever. If it's not something that you don't do, I get it. Why should I have to pay for it? But you know what? That's countywide, that's statewide. Look at the money that some of these pro sporting teams get to come to our state, okay? I'm never going to go to their game.
So six years ago when I moved in here, seventy percent of our population was elderly. Today, eighty percent of it is thirty or younger.
Like I say, you're up here, you're never going to, you're never going to please everybody. So sometimes it's a tough decision. Sometimes it's an easy decision. But there's always going to be someone that says, I'll never use that. Why should my taxpayers go towards that? In every scenario, even when your road gets redone.
Or there's people that are going to be against it currently, Councilman Collison, and then when it opens, they'll be the first one in line.
That's possible too. So people with sidewalks, I don't use a sidewalk. Why should we have to pay for it?
I don't either.
It, it can go on and on and on. And believe me, we hear about it, not just this one meeting here. We hear it all year long.
I don't drive down your street. Why should I have to pay for that?
Well, yeah, we've gotten that too.
Yep.
So.
What did we have in twenty twenty-two here? Uh, Otzegel, I guess they were. There's, there's lower tax rates. I might have to move to one of those cities. Who knows? Anybody else has anything they'd like to say? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Five oh one Sixth Ave, Southwest.
So I can't afford my house next year. So I'm probably going to end up living with my parents again. I'm almost thirty. Because I'm not getting paid enough and I'm working too hard for it. But it sucks because I worked so hard to buy this house. I can't afford to go to school right now. And I just, my car's breaking down. I gotta pay for a new car. It just sucks because I just, I worked so hard to buy this house. So, I don't know. I just feel like all this money I worked for is, went to nothing. Sorry.
That's all right.
You're good. We want to hear everybody's opinion.
I was wanting to be super happy living here and it's getting harder and harder.
When was the last time you were in here, Megan? Was that last year or two years ago?
Maybe last year, I think.
Was it?
It's hard to get off work when you work at a hospital.
Right, which you do need to be paid more by all means.
Yeah.
Two years in a row she got one road done and the other road done.
Yeah. You just had Sixth Ave done and now your other road.
And you had just moved in.
I thought I wasn't getting the other side done.
For the first year.
The first, well, you had Sixth Ave done and then.
My driveway street was done.
Sixth Ave.
Yeah.
The other road wasn't yet. Yeah, that other road. Yeah, so it hasn't been done yet.
It's not getting done?
No, not.
I think it's already been done.
It's just got done.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. So it was already done when you moved in. This year it was done.
More money. More money I don't have, so. I don't know. I don't know what else to say. It just sucks.
You're not alone.
I wish there was more, but it's not. Sorry.
We value your opinion. Thank you, Megan.
Yeah, don't apologize.
And don't apologize, correct.
I think that's always the important thing to remember too, is it's, it's real dollars. I mean, when we look at this stuff, it's not monopoly money. It's actual money that people are depending on that they need. And it's, there's a lot of people out there that are trying to make ends meet and inflation is crazy and we're getting into, you know, probably into a recession that we're going to be seeing here soon, I would guess. I mean, hopefully not, but, uh, but I think that's always something we got to keep in mind that, that price tag and, and Dan, I respect your opinion on that absolutely. But the price tag does matter, you know? I mean, I think that's, that's, that is the key.
Because they all add up.
Right, and they do all add up, but I mean, I think you, you got to balance that, but I mean, I.
Yeah.
The price tag is important still too, so.
You know, and sometimes that's the CIP. You know, those plans like that help balance that stuff out.
Yeah, in the long run, those types of plans are very helpful. But you got to have them implemented for a little while, get through that backlog.
There was a lot of things that in twenty nineteen we were faced with that it was, uh, we got to make up for that. There was a lot. And I, I think if everybody came in and asked for those in black and white, I, I think you'd be a little bit amazed. Or maybe you wouldn't. I don't know, but.
But didn't we, I think, with the development on East Side, didn't we finally get that bad deal?
What's, what's that? Oh, that, that, yeah, that was way before my time, so I'm not, I don't know a lot about that.
Doesn't seem that long ago.
Oh, that's where the developer filed bankruptcy and the city got stuck with. With that bill.
That was, that set us back years.
I mean, there's.
But you still have to, even with setbacks like that, you still have to move the city forward. Whether, you know, if your road's falling apart, um, you can only patch them, reseal them so many times before it starts costing you more money. That's just an example. Playing catch up with that for a long time costed us.
Yeah, yeah, that's for sure.
Sitting up here, it's kind of one of those things. You're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't. And government doesn't move that fast. I've learned that in four years. Anybody else I'd like to speak on this? Please feel free, step up, state your name and address for the record. It's, I, I seen it eaten away at you, Mr. Johnson. Still got to state your name and address.
Johnson, I live at five ten Main Street West Isanti. I'm just here to make a comment more than anything else. I realize that in this world that we live in, I don't care what it is. Everything is paid through taxation, others as far as the county, as far as the city is concerned, as far as the townships are concerned. The only way you, they pay for anything is through taxation. Now, I'm going to talk a little bit about amenities. I'm not against amenities, but I do feel this is, I'm directing this to the council. I'll use for an example, the amphitheater. When it was built, probably some grant money was included. I'm not sure how much, but there, let's say it was a cost of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Okay, we got the amphitheater. Now, we, now that we have it, how are we going to use it? We got it, we could, now we got more expenditure because we got to do something. Usually an amphitheater has seating provisions. Every amphitheater I've ever seen has some form of seating. They also, we had power to it, but I don't think it was sufficient power, so we got to add additional power. We have to, there's other added costs that come in addition to the initial cost of the amphitheater. And so that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar expenditure is going to probably turn into something that's five hundred thousand dollars by the time we add all of the additional things to make that so that it can be utilized in any form in which we want to use it. And so here we come with the splash, with the splash pad. I'm not against the splash, splash pad, but it is a sizable amount of money. And this amount of money has to be paid through, how else is this paid? It's paid through taxation, one form or another. Now we got the splash, the splash pad, but now is there going to be added cost to this in addition to building it? It's got to be maintained. It has to be manned. It has to be supervised. It has to be, there's added expense to this. Those expenses have got to be added on to the additional cost of the unit. And it's got to be serviced through taxation. That's the only place it can be done. So my point is when we, when this city, and this comes down to the council now. When we come with these developments, these new developments, amenities, I'm using as an example. There's other expenditures that, that could be included in this. But I think, I don't think that the plan is thought through far enough. The end result, I think we have to have a complete, you got an initial cost of the, whatever the amenity is, but you've got the added cost from that point on. And whatever that cost is, that's got to be paid by every one of these people that live within this community, within this, within Isanti and the county, because they're the ones going to primarily use it. So that's my concern. I'm asking the council to be a little more selective, critical, uh, research a little more deeply than we're presently, than, than probably on some of the things that's been done, done in the past. And so, um, I, Mayor Jeff here brought up that our population is, I think he said seventy percent people in the thirty-year age range and about thirty percent are in the senior sector. A little bit about the senior sector. I happen to be in one of those. And so what happens with that is that with the senior sector, and I'm, and I live, and I live in a complex where they're all seniors that are living there. And they're all concerned because a certain, high percentage of these people that are living there are on fixed incomes. If they're on social security, they've really got a problem if that's their only source of income. Because it, it's almost impossible for them, for them to do that. So what's going to happen with that is that they cannot continue, they can't continue to to live here or to live probably anywhere. But when you become a senior, your incomes are capped. If that's your, whatever source of income, that's as high as it's going to get. Now, I'm going to put that in perspective with someone who's in a wage earning class chronologically. So they say they're feeling the same crunch. The cost of fuel, the cost of food, the cost of all of housing, the cost of repair, all of this. They're very experiencing the same crunch as the senior is. The only difference is, is that they have an opportunity to move somewhat with it. As expenditures continue to rise, so does their income. So they can somewhat cash flow it. If they say, well, I can't, good God, I can't hardly live on what I'm earning. Well, then you have a choice. You either figure out a way or you go to another position where you're earning more so that you can afford to do it, whichever. But the senior cannot do this. They are locked in. So when we start looking about taxation, is one of the, only one of the expenditures that that senior is dealing with. But when you put it all together, you're probably going to see a higher percentage of the thirty-year-olds and less, a lower percentage of the senior sector unless something can be done. And where I realize that you can only do so much as far as this tax situation is concerned, there's only so much that we can do or that you can do. But, uh, I'm hoping that as a future, uh, these amenities, as we add to them, I'm hoping they're thought through very thoroughly, looking at the long range rather than the, this, the immediate. So with that, these are only forms of comment and, uh, and I'm not envious of your job either, Mike, in any way, shape or form. So with that, I thank you and that's my comments.
Thanks, Mr. Johnson.
And I agree completely with, with Leroy there. And, and I mean, I, other, other than the only thing I would say is that Mike, and, and to, to your point, I, I forget your name, I'm sorry, but, uh, in the back there that, I mean, if you, Mike does plan all that out very, very carefully. I mean, if you look at what he's got, I mean, he does have all those small things that he didn't really get into in this, in this format is just because he doesn't want to bore you to death. So if you do want to see what he's got to, where he, I mean, he has it. I mean, he will bore you to death if you ask him to and he'll show you forty years from now how much he thinks a pencil is going to cost probably or something like that. I mean, it's, it's really, it's maybe not quite that extreme, but it's pretty close.
That's funny, but true.
It is, yeah. I mean, he really works hard to plan that out. And to your point, Leroy, I mean, that is another thing that, that, you know, when we look at amenities that we do add, they need to be things that are low maintenance, that don't have to always be repaired in the future. And a splash pad is a perfect thing. I mean, if you go to, it really, a lot, I mean, I was just up in Duluth with the kids here, uh, just a couple of weeks ago at the hotel that has a splash pad there and, or a water park and half the stuff's not working, you know, which I'm sure it's expensive to fix and, and it breaks down. And so, you know, you got to think about things that when you do add them, it needs to be things that are, are not expensive to maintain for sure. So that's a lot of great points there.
We looked at several, oh, just thinking of the splash pad, we looked at several different types of splash pads to see which ones were more expensive to maintain. You know, we had, we didn't have to get the information, the council, the staff got all those numbers. The, the different types, the different types of, I mean, we went into detail, different types of water circulation styles, recycling water styles, the cost of every single one, issues with them down the road. I mean.
Of repairing items. I mean, we, we went through all of it.
We did. So we did do, the staff did their research and we got to listen to all the research, but, so we do.
I still think it should be charged. We're paying one person in a booth, no lifeguards on duty. Collect money.
It still could happen.
My opinion.
We do, we.
You, you discount residents, you full boat anybody else coming in?
The staff does a really good job at preparing us to make a decision. They do cover a lot of bases for us so we can make the best educated decision that, you know, is in front of us.
Anybody else would like to speak on this matter? Mr. Becker, anything else you'd like to answer?
At this point, I just want to make sure everybody's got an opportunity to speak. That's, that's what we're.
I can't say it enough. We're, it's what we're here for. If you want to say something, you step right up to the podium, state your name and address for the record and ask away. We, by approving this budget tonight, Mr. Becker, this, does this or does this not mean it could be changed in twenty twenty-three?
Budgets can be amended at any time. Uh, the levy though is final. What you set for the levy tonight is yet. There is no change in that. So if there's, um, you know, if there, if there's, if there's action that the council would like to take this evening is the chance.
As far as the levy goes?
What was some big item numbers in twenty twenty-three?
Did you, uh, did you close the public hearing or?
No, I, anybody can speak.
Yeah, it's, it's tech.
It's.
It's technically not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
We just have to, by statute, we have to provide opportunity for comment and we should not exclude anybody that would like to make comment or have a question.
So I mean, Mike, I mean, what, you know, what would be some of the things that you would like to take a look at or that you think we could take a look at to, to maybe start trying to chip away at this?
So, I mean, basically remembering that I, you know, I provide guidance and my entire thing is I will, I want to say my piece and council will make the choice. And whether I think the council's made a great choice or, or a bad choice, I hope that you can't tell what I think. And by God, I get on board. That's how that works. But given the comments tonight, um, if the council says, you know what? I heard these comments, and I think there's, you know, a cause to um, to to lower the levy, um, you know, I can I can. I can keep think of a couple of things that I'm not, you know, I guess I I don't know how comfortable I am or I'm not, but um, a couple of things is, um, one, in the budget, uh, we do have one position that is budgeted, but has not been filled, is currently not filled and hasn't been for nearly a year. And that is one officer position. That'd be in the ballpark of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. You could simply say, we're going to freeze that. We can cut that from the levy. That's one option. Other option is, and again, this is going to be, is the council, is the council on board with the risk that associated with the decision for future budgets? This budget had a contribution to fund balance of a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. And we've talked about why that is important as a rainy day fund to be able to provide tax relief in the future. If the council is looking at this at this moment in time and saying, I think that's now, then you consider stripping that away and reducing the levy.
What's that, a hundred and sixty-six thousand?
That is the contribution to fund balance. It's the difference between revenues and expenditures in the general fund. Ideally, if we hit the budget exactly on, which never would happen anyway, but if you hit the budget right on, at the end of the year, there would be a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars left over. That is called a contribution to fund balance, and for, you know, any layman, that would you would call that a rainy day fund, right? That is the money that sits aside in the general fund that it provides an opportunity for future budget flexibility. If you think you are not going to need that budget flexibility in the future, that's a that's an option. But this is the risk assessment.
Thing you don't know.
You well, you'll never know. That's why I say is that if you if you don't put them put some into the fund balance, you are taking a risk, and it is up to the council to decide if if that's a risk that they think, you know, is this the moment in time to do that? I that that's for a council decision.
We're still not sure what um, what we're spending on the police department remodel, right?
What's what's that?
We're still not sure what we're going to spend on this police department remodel. Is that still up in the air?
That's still up in the air. We had fifty thousand in the current budget and fifty-three thousand set currently in the twenty twenty-three budget. I I right now, from the from the few bids that I've seen, um, I think they're terrible. I mean, if it were.
It's a terrible amount of money because it's.
I think I think the bids are terrible. I think the bids are so bad, I would bid the work myself and do it for a fraction of what they're bidding at. How about that?
It's probably a bad time to be trying to get bids.
Yeah, so it it might just be bad timing. Sometimes the council, when you go to those kinds of things, sometimes you look at the bids and just go, no. And you come back to it in six or twelve months. And in this case, for the PD building, we don't have to be out of the other building until the end of twenty twenty-five. So we have, I mean, fortunately, we have flexibility on that. If if we look at what comes in to rehab that building and get that up to snuff for PD to fully move over there, if we don't like the bids that show up now, um, or before the end of the month here, I think Travis is going to present at the December twentieth meeting. If we don't like those, we just, no, we can come back to it another time.
How much time?
Do that during committee, right? Committee of a whole, we're going to start looking at numbers a little bit?
How much time does the police have to move before fire takes over that building?
The end of twenty twenty-five, the last day, twelve thirty, twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, by eleven fifty-nine, we got to be out. They will have paid full for the uh, for the building, and we will have to have exited. So we still got.
Three years.
And we don't really have to have that project totally completed. I mean, we can start with an evidence room and then, you know, a few offices, and I mean, it can be gradually done over time, too, right? So.
That has been my discussion with uh, with Chief Myers along the way, is that that it is unlikely that it is feasible to just do all of the things that we would like to do with that building, that it's going to have to be along the way. There'll be some things that happen in a year or two, and there are going to be other things that are going to happen in seven years, and maybe other things that still happen yet again in, you know, twelve years. But that'll be part of the part of putting together that entire plan.
So, Chief, you're formulating a.